Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the November 3 meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo is the dog master for today.
Skinny. Somebody needs to take her home and feed her. She's scared of you.
Come on, let's turn around for the camera. Our featured dog for today is a female lab mix. She was an owner turned in from Wellington. She's looking for a good home, very friendly, little bit skittish. So if you're interested in another great dog, Commissioners are still batting a thousand this year. We show has been adopted. Please stop by our Lorraine County Dog Clinic and take a look.
This thought is attributed to Cheryl Schneider from the North Ohio Heart Center, class of 96, with leadership Lorraine County. I saw, oh, there you are, Jim. You came back this week, and I'm pleased that you did. We have a certificate to honor Dr. Jim Skiles, who is the recipient of the 2005 Distinguished Service Award presented by the National Association of County Agricultural Agents for Excellence in Extension Education Programs. And when I'm done giving this to you, Jim, I want you to tell us just a little bit about your combined positions, and maybe even how you're funded, because our new Commissioners maybe don't know all the nuances that go with your job. This is to honor you as the recipient of the 2005 Distinguished Service Award presented by the National Association of County Agricultural Agents for Excellence in Extension Education Programs. An Extension Educator at Lorraine County OSU Agricultural Extension, Dr. Skiles, has served on numerous committees and won many other significant awards for his contributions to agricultural agriculture, natural resources, and community development. We in Lorraine County are privileged to have him as part of our team. And I think we need to mention, too, agriculture is the number two economic development program in Lorraine County. So anyway, we're very honored that you received this award, and we're gonna add our kudos to it, too.
I'm delighted to talk about the joint arrangement between Ohio State University Extension, Lorraine County, and the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District. It's a unique arrangement in the state of Ohio and in the nation. The Solid Waste Management District funds my position, and I never miss a chance to promote a program. We're in the midst of a program where the program being conducted in every library in the county, including all the branches, every library that has a meeting room, we are conducting the program titled Leaves to Black Gold. We had an esteemed person last night at the Herrick Library in Wellington, Ron Twining was there. So I'm not gonna give one of these brochures that we pass out at the program. I brought enough brochures with me for the front of the room, and I'll go back down to my car and get one to everybody in the back of the room after the presentation. The arrangements worked out very well. We do composting. I work with the commercial composters on a commercial basis, and I think the arrangement has even been recognized by the Ohio Compost Association. I spoke to the Ohio Compost Association at their last annual meeting, and we'll be attending their annual meeting this year in Worcester. So they recognize this arrangement and what we're working with. We work with other programs besides composting, but we're featuring composting because we're in the midst of that program right now. We'll do a second series of programs. One of the unique things about this program is that the Solid Waste Management District subsidizes anybody that wishes to buy a compost bin. They subsidize the sale of those compost bins, and the master gardeners will take orders at the first session, then they deliver the compost bins to the people at the second session. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. I just think it's unique how you came to us, and I was privileged to participate in the selection process, so I think I made a good choice, along with the committee that picked you. And we're happy that you're here in Lorraine County, doing a great job. Questions, Commissioners?
Nice job, Jim.
Thank you very much. Pass them out. Do your thing.
Ron, you can pass it to the board. That direction, I'll go get more for this portion of the room, and I'll be right back.
Thank you very much. Secondly, Jerry Dahl, where are you? I have an oath of office to administer to you, so if you would come to the microphone, please. Good morning.
Good morning.
Jerry is our new Administrator of Golden Acres. So, wanna raise your hand? You can read along with me. That way, if I say too much, you'll get it just right.
I, Jerry Dahl, do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will discharge the duties of my office of Administrator of Golden Acres with fidelity that I have not paid or contributed or promised to pay contribute either directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing to procure my appointment, except for necessary and proper expenses expressly authorized by law, that I have not knowingly violated any election law of the state or procured it due to be done by others in my behalf, not that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office and the compensation allowed by the law. So help me God.
Amen. You are swearing in. Would you sign, and I will sign, and we will give this to whoever should have it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Welcome aboard. So last week, we had a retirement party for Bill Glawacki, and this week, we're swearing Jerry Dahl in, so welcome aboard, Jerry. Okay, I think that's your turn, Madam Clerk.
Under Resolution Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved. No? Yes, there was something.
Second.
So moved. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as you came in the summary?
Well, we must be consistent, if nothing else. Commissioners, I'd like to request an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today. I have an issue of collective bargaining, potential new hire at 911, and a brief discussion on ongoing litigation.
Our sanitary engineer approved an entry into agreement between Edward Smith Tech, developer for Bell Subdivision, City of Illyria, City of Lorraine, Lorraine County. The developer shall construct sanitary sewer, excuse me, sanitary trunk sewer line and sanitary lateral sewer lines and apertenses along West River Road extending to the development on West River Road.
Are there any questions on this? Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
This is the City of Illyria's gonna be treating the sewage for this development.
I believe that's correct. Mr. Conney should be here.
I saw him walk in.
He said he didn't wanna speak unless he had to, but I guess he does now. Just made it in. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
This, Jerry, has some history about this, as well as Jack Januzzi, but the agreement is a joint agreement between the City of Illyria, City of Lorraine, and ourselves. It connects into West River Road, but the sewer effluent will be treated by the City of Lorraine. But the location of the line is in Illyria, in an agreement of maintenance. And then we permit them because it's using our particular road system. That's why it's a three-party agreement.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Approve an entry into a proposal for professional engineering services with K. McCarty and Associates and E. In Comansfield, Ohio, in a total amount of $152,200 for the upgrades to E. Holmes, Brentwood Lake, and Crest Haven wastewater treatment plants.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve an entry into contract with Arcadia FPS Inc., Cleveland, in the amount of $178,593 to provide engineering services for Island Road from the E. Township Line to the CSX Ray Road, E. Township. Arcadia was selected using the county's consultant selection process and is an ODOT pre-qualified. This will be paid from account professional services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to schedule various public hearings to be held Thursday, December 8, 2005, for various subdivisions in Lorraine County to approve the detention basins and outlet maintenance costs to be placed on permanent county maintenance. Notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegraph on November 17th and 24th, and letters will be sent to property owners on November 18th. One is for Carrington Point Subdivision, Carlisle Township. Darrell Norris is the developer. Construction cost is $55,200, and each sub lot benefiting from drainage items will pay 5% of the total construction cost of $2,760 per year, and each lot assessed $60 per year. Hearing will be held at 10:00 a.m. Willow Creek Subdivision 2, E. Township, Rich Baron is the developer. Construction cost is $21,600. Each sub lot benefiting from the drainage items will pay 5% of the total construction cost of $1,080 per year, and each lot assessed $60. Hearing will held at 10:05. Willow Creek Subdivision 3, E. Township, Rich Baron is the developer. Construction cost is $15,600, and each sub lot benefiting from drainage items will pay 5% of the total construction cost of $780 per year. Each lot assessed $60. Hearing will be held at 10:10.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve various funding requests from Lorraine County Domestic Relations. $5,961 requested from Juvenile Accountability Block Grant discretionary grant to provide implementation of the Court's Aggression Replacement Training Program to reduce antisocial behaviors. There is cash match of $662 required from the County General Fund, and $24,039 requested from Juvenile Accountability Block Grant to provide continuation of the Mayor Program 2 and Lorraine County Public Schools Attendance Program addressing truancy issues. There is cash match of $2,671 required from the County General Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Question? Yes, Mr. Cordes, do you know, if you know, this money is to come from the County General Fund as the match? Is it coming out of their already appropriated monies?
No, Commissioner. It would be coming out of a pool of money that we set aside when these opportunities become available. So it is budgeted for, it's just not in their budget, it's in your budget.
Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under MRDD, approve agreement between Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Lorraine County Prosecutor for the Support of Mental Retarded Developmental Disabled Individuals. Declare necessary transfer funds pursuant to Ohio Revise Code Section 5705.15 and 5705.16. In accordance with the law, the Board of Commissioners shall appropriate the transfer funds to the budget of Lorraine County Prosecutor, set fees for the year 2005 in the amount of $31,023, and for the year 2006 in the amount of $31,023.
This is for services in the prosecutor's office, is it not? Also moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the share, approve an entry into various agreements of the capital Lorraine County share. One, physicians assistance agreement with Brian T. Davis for three years at an hourly rate of $51.10, increasing the minimum weekly hours of service from six hours per week to nine hours per week, to be paid from jail professional services account. And psychological services agreement with Dr. Coricke in the amount of $1,200 to be reimbursed for seminar registration fees, travel expenses, et cetera, to be paid from other jail expenses account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator?
Commissioners, yesterday, I and some of your senior staff were attending a lengthy morning with the Federal Transportation Authority and ODOT to learn the new complexities of the, basically, highway funding safety loop. Things are changing. I know that, probably from the WAC, you've heard that, and Commissioner Blair, you've been more in tune with that than most. It was a pleasing meeting. I was, sometimes these meetings have a dubious value when you get there, and you sit there, and you don't really come away with a lot, but we had a, I was very excited yesterday. One of the things we learned is that we may very well be able to combine our funding from future-year earmarks into current spending. If we make a request, they call it a letter of nonprejudice. There's some risk involved. Should they change our funding two or three years from now, the earmark, we would be at risk of not getting the money back. But up until this point, we haven't been able to combine money from forward years to get the project underway right now. And we now believe we can do that, and we're working on putting that all together. We also found out yesterday that if we finance the project, we can pay back interest costs and issuance costs of doing the financing, which was something new, too. So we don't have to have that money available right now ourselves. We can actually do construction notes, and then the chargebacks can come out of the federal money. So those were two nice events that occurred yesterday. The other part of that was that we're going to get our asbestos removal underway very soon here. ODOT is going to release the authority to do that, and after that's done, they are going to allow transfer of the remaining $550,000 to $600,000 of NOLAC money to the FTA so we can combine our funding, so we don't have to deal with multiple agencies, and we can deal with one revenue stream, which will make things much easier for us. It was a good morning, there was a lot of fine people that I talked to and things to talk about. Mr. Twining, Ms. Davis, and Mr. Ferguson were also with me. They're all working on the Transportation Center project. So I'm very encouraged that we're going to see a huge amount of activity next year on the train station. And I wasn't so certain because of the way the funding was dripping in before, but this is good for us. This is gonna be, it's gonna be a good year for that project next year. I don't know if Mr. Twining wants to add any additional comments from the meeting. So that occurred yesterday. Also, tomorrow morning, we're having the people that have been going to our transit focus groups, for lack of a better term, mini chirets, coming to the train station. And I had forgotten, I don't think that I've walked through with the two new Commissioners and been through there, you know, we've talked about the project, and you've seen the building, but we're gonna actually do a thorough walkthrough tomorrow, and if you'd like to, you know, join us, it'd be kinda nice, if you can have a little bit of time. I'll have Sandy arrange it with your assistants. And I apologize for not doing that earlier. It didn't dawn on me that I should, and I apologize for that. So if you can forgive me and find a hole in your schedule to come out and join us, I would really appreciate it. There'll be some people there, and we'll have some of the plans laid out, and we, you can maybe better grasp the magnitude of the undertaking that we're getting involved with down there. And that'll conclude my remarks this morning. I wanna keep it a short morning, but those are very productive things for Lorraine County. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis Assistant Director?
I believe Mr. Flanagan needs to discuss three pending litigation issues with the Commissioners, so we would request an executive session to do that.
Commissioner's report?
Commissioner Laurie? I have no report this morning.
No report, quiet week. Just reminding everybody, get out and vote on Tuesday, exercise your right.
It just seems like yesterday was Thursdays. I, the weeks keep running together. I have no report.
Clerk's report, the only thing is Commissioners will meet next Wednesday, November 9th, instead of Thursday, November 10th, and then also Investment Advisory Committee meeting will be held on that Wednesday, also at 11:00 a.m.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Board of Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone who wishes to address the board? Elizabeth?
Mr. Kalo gives me the opportunity to say, I wish he would remove his jacket, because in that case, we would have up in front of us red, white, and blue, just in time for election, which indeed is very, very important.
Glad you guys got the memo.
The other thing I would like to mention is that this past weekend, there were flu shots given in Oberlin at the high school, and I took three other people up, my age or much older, and we were all prepared to stand in line and so forth and so on, and to our utter astonishment, particularly to one who is from another state, just moved here, we were able to stay in the car, and someone came out and very efficiently administered the flu shots, and very, very pleasantly, and we were out of there in like five minutes. And I think all the way home, we just talked about how extraordinarily unexpected and nice this was, and so I congratulate the County Health Department.
Thank you. Applause, well deserved. Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else? We're setting a record this morning, 25 minutes? I see no takers. I move you going to the executive session for the purposes outlined by these two gentlemen.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria.
This morning, as requested, I'm not sure if it was Elizabeth or Shirley, Elizabeth, okay, the Oberlin connection, I made a request about voting machines, and so this morning, we are having an electronic demonstration from Lorraine County Community College, Mark Caronahan, and we also have in the audience Ken Kelleher, Lorraine County Board of Elections.
I just wanted to show you the machine itself. The Lorraine County Board of Elections has invested a great deal of time and energy into finding the best possible election tool that we can provide for the community. I certainly don't speak for the Board of Elections. I am a trainer for Public Services Institute at Lorraine County Community College, and I can show you the demonstration that I've been doing for our community members throughout the county. There's a lot of questions about what's gonna happen on voting day, and will the new machines change that process? And actually, it's very similar to what you would have gone through in the past. You'll still go up to the desks when you enter the polling location, you'll still sign in, and instead of giving a ballot, you'll get a smart card, a plastic card that has encrypted information on it, that you'll be able to use at any of the machines, because on this card, you'll have your particular ballot that is appropriate for you. So hopefully, it will help alleviate some of those lines that you might have faced in the past. The process itself is very, very simple, and it's very intuitive. You place the card in the slot in the upper right-hand corner of the machine, it's got a little picture of what that looks like. We're gonna do this demonstration twice, we're gonna do it once for the audience, and I'm gonna turn it around so that you, to my left, will be able to see it as well. So I take the machine's card, and I slide it into the slot, I wait until it clicks. It's saying, this access card has already voted, because I didn't reset it. I had done a little demonstration for myself earlier, so now I, as the polling worker, would have reset the card, making sure that I'm the only one who can use it, sliding it into the slot, and up comes the instructions. So everything that I'm telling you today, you can read for yourself on voting day itself. The print is rather small for many people, so what we have is the ability to press on the lower left-hand side a button that says large text, and those instructions appear in a much larger way. I can read through the instructions. Essentially, it's saying, find the candidate that you wanna vote for and touch their name or touch the box to the left of their name. I can also touch on the high contrast button. For people who have colorblindness, for instance, they'll be able to see all of the text in black and white. When I'm ready to vote, I click on the next button, and my ballot appears. We have a sample ballot here, so we have very important elections that you're gonna have to vote on today, Ted. The favorite Ohio president, the Minister of Space Travel, the Commissioners of Ohio Literature, and of course, the Minister of Art. So these are pressing issues that we're all very concerned about, and I'll sample my choices tapping on them. If I get to this point, and I've chosen somebody, perhaps I wanna change my mind, all I need to do is tap on that vote and click on somebody else. Now, here it's saying, vote for two. I only need to vote for the people that I want, so if I only have one selection, that's just fine. I tap on the next button, going to the second part of the ballot, and here I have the Commissioners of the National Pastime, the Minister of Music, Issue 1, which is actually my favorite issue that's coming up here, should dead people be allowed to vote on cemetery questions and run for office if they should so choose? I don't think that dead people should. I don't think that dead people should be allowed to vote. And I'm going to vote for my school district. When I'm all done, I click on the next button and it gives me a chance to review my ballot in its entirety. I can look over the entire ballot. It has a couple of different colors here now that some of you may notice. There are some red sections and it's telling me, Mark, you didn't vote for those. Did you really want to skip those or would you like to go back? If I choose to go back, I just tap on that red section or I could tap on the back button and there, my ballot appears again. So I could now add a second person, for instance, for this miniature, Mr. Commissioner of Literature. When I'm all set, I press on the print ballot piece. There's an awful lot of safeguards in this system. Your vote is being tallied on a roll of paper, much like a register receipt. So there's a physical hard copy of your ballot that's being stored and it's also being stored on a removable disk and a hard drive inside of this terminal. So there's three different backup systems that we're going to be able to use. I can review my ballot on the paper, just like I reviewed it on the screen. I can make sure that that's exactly what I want and when I'm finally ready, I can click on the cast ballot. My vote hasn't been tallied yet until I push on the cast ballot button. If I choose, if I've really made a bad choice, I want to go back, I've reconsidered, I can say I want to reject that ballot and I can go start this process from start to finish again. But I'm very happy with my choices, so I'm going to click on the cast ballot. The paper ballot now rolls up, so the next person coming to vote cannot see who I voted for, but I can see that it's gone into this locked case inside of this ballot so that I have some checks and balances. Now, I just need to remember to take my card back and where we used to hand our ballot back?